Okay. Let's call the meeting to order. Minutes of reports received from five?
Yes.
Huh? Commissioner, committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events?
Board of directors for the Board of Realtors tomorrow, Campbell Board of Directors tomorrow, Chamber Connections tomorrow night, Sheriff Christmas much tomorrow. We're not supposed to tell you about that one.
Yes, you are. Hopefully you are SVP.
Hey, Betty. That's all I got.
I have cap reach in board meeting tonight, home saving, board meeting tomorrow morning,
labor union Christmas party tomorrow night, Thursday, a half cent sales tax meeting at 7:45. Kind of ring the bell for Salvation Army, find a store with Warren and John Marsh. New Tribune, I get to go judge their Christmas decorations at noon. And then Friday, I got a USS Missouri meeting. That's all we have. Commission comments?
I'm going to stay. That's what I was wanting.
We're going to shift stuff around then. Sheriff White, sir, would you like to?
Yes, sir.
It said you have to be here.
Yeah. Betty, have you turned in or you ready to turn in? Want to make sure there was turned in. Just to comment on merit. Yeah, I covered it in the letters attached to it. Our system works really well. People that were not performing as well last year have seemed to take it to heart to pick it up. And it's very interesting. We sent you the good sheets over. You're certain to look at all of them. If you have any questions arise out of that, please ask. The first one we're going to deal with is the, y'all were wondering about the four positions, right? The detective and the three jailers.
Very cute start with the detective position.
Absolutely. We requested that we add another detective to our detective unit. Currently, right now, our detective unit consists of five. Five, two of those five are supervisors. The supervisor would be Sergeant Woodson at this point in time. His duties continue to grow. He's still in charge of evidence, returning evidence back. Does a lot of work for Prosecute Attorney's Office as far as CDs, cases, and things that they need in order to prosecute the cases. The other supervisor would be Sergeant Sneller. Sergeant Sneller is in charge of the Mustang River Task Force. Task Force consists of several other jurisdictions in which in turn he works with those supervisors. Correction, he works with those narcotic agents, with their sheriffs, chiefs of police, and keeps tabs on them, and also does performance appraisal on them as well. He is a Cole County deputy, but his duties as far as what he does for us requires him to investigate narcotics, along with supervising one other investigation, which is part of, investigator, which is part of that five. So ultimately, we have three investigators working crimes here in Cole County. Although all deputies do work investigations, the bigger ones that require us to do a lot of traveling, a lot of questioning, we tend to kick those up to investigations. With only three people actually working that, it makes it hard for us to be able to do that. The reason for the request comes with the increase in cyber crimes, child pornography cases, and other cases involving technology. With the increase in technology and technology on the rise, it becomes increasingly hard for us to dedicate resources upon these leads. Computer leads tend to come and go, i.e. if we are currently tracking an individual who's using credit cards or who is soliciting children online, we have to take an investigator and hook him up with a cyber crime unit out of Boone County, which in turn is not in our county. The main request for this is for the protection of our children. We want to make sure that we're able to give the children in Cole County when they're, how do you say, if they're being solicited or if they're being victimized, we want to be able to put an investigator on that. At this time, currently, whenever we have another case that's, I don't want to say bigger than the juvenile cases, we have to take the investigators off that case and that case just sits. There's no one else to put on that case to continue the investigation. Because we do that, we lose time, we lose leads. One other investigator is going to help us. Currently, at this time, this year, we have probably, my stats are correct here, we have went, made 40 trips to the Rainbow House. For those of you all who don't know what the Rainbow House is, the Rainbow House is our child advocacy center in Columbia, in which they do all the forensic investigations on children.
That means the interviews. There's a methodology, and that's something that our prosecuting attorney has also required in those investigations.
So during that investigation, we have, we lose a deputy out of Cole County to go up there to watch and to listen to and to take notes during those investigations. Once we've put someone in jail, the investigation doesn't stop there. We also lose deputies whether they're, and we tried just about everything, deputies on light duty. We have them listen to phone conversations from our jail and other intelligence resources that we need, that we don't have full-time people to put on. We've tried just about everything. So again, once those cases are made, there's still a whole lot of work that needs to be done, and their caseload doesn't disappear. Those cases just sit until they can come back to them. We're only asking for one. The reason why we're asking for one is because by and large, we push those guys. There's times where we're coming out, 3, 4, 5 o'clock in the morning, and including myself and the sheriff as well, to help during investigations. This year, we've had four shootings, missing persons, in which in turn, many of those cases took us well into the 20-hour mark of what's working. One more investigator is going to help us stay on top of, basically, I want to stay on top of the child cases, child pornography, child abuse, and sexual cases. This year alone, right now, 2015, we're looking at 13 child abuse cases, 24 sexual offenses. Of the 24, 15 were juvenile cases. Again, they require a lot of interrogation, a lot of investigation. And another problem that we run into is when it involves electronics, we have to send the electronics off. Once the electronics get back, then we have to read the reports in which we get back from people who have done the forensic examination of computer or electronic device. Telephone conversations have to be monitored. Again, we try to stick the same investigator on that, but again, it's very time, so we just don't have the manpower to stay up with what we have going on. Currently, Jefferson City Police Department has six investigators. They have six investigators, their supervisor does not investigate cases. This is just for comparison. All the other five investigators do. We are approximately 9,500 people short of what they have living in the city out of county, and we're doing it with three. So it's not a matter of us not pushing the guys and making sure we're getting squeezed and everything out of them. It's just a matter of, we need help for overflow. We need to be able to stay on top of our child cases.
You know, and when you look at it, in addition to that, our burglary solvability rate compared to other law enforcement agencies is very high, and that's because our people are good. You know, the social media thing is always interesting. I'd point out the lady who was involved in the shooting in San Bernardino County, DHS simply didn't check her social media and should have caught that. Well, you have to have people to make sure that you're catching all the things that you can catch. You're still going to miss some, but the fact is, is that our guys are doing a marvelous job. They have high solvability rate, but there's things that are getting by that shouldn't and the volume is picking up. Any questions on the detective?
So this detective is going to be doing IT, he's going to be doing regular?
And let me, let me, all of them.
Full investigations.
Yeah, all of our investigators have to do everything. We can and we can't. Even our not-bid investigators often get caught up in cases, which we had yesterday at one of our hotels here, where we had all the investigators, and then we ended up having all the marks because it brought in, and they all be caught up in everything.
I wish there were easy answers to everything. There's just not. It's a fact of life, society is changing.
Yeah, I mean, one of the other big cases that I did not bring up with is currently we have two prisons in our jurisdictions. Our investigators are responsible for the narcotic interdictions and stuff that go on in those investigations. We have stabbing, we have a serious assault. Usually, we, in conjunction with the Department of Corrections, investigators also investigate those crimes as well, which can cause us to put a investigator, all of them, run through a on-call status for the weekend for something that happened at one of our penitentiaries here. Sergeant Woodson has been the primary. He's had 15 arrests out of just the prisons for narcotic violations, in which he's done an interdiction, in which we knew it was coming in, which again required them to listen to telephone conversations and do a lot of intelligence work for us to be able to make those cases.
In the prisons, like any other state institution, it's a requirement that we're the chief law enforcement entity for those facilities. We assist Lincoln University anytime that they need that assistance. Same thing with Capitol Police and any other state agency that they go up.
Unfortunately, crime is not going to go away. It's not going to get smaller, it's just going to keep growing. So, you know, I'm a strong supporter of law enforcement. I didn't want to do it. These guys I know, FTEs, they're not.
I think you pulled everybody else out too. Did you not? I don't remember us being me and Jeff against everybody.
No, nobody. Yeah, I think it's about everybody else. We're poor. It's a poor county.
But I'm still, no, I'm, uh... Well, as a side note, this is, I just hit my phone. Los Angeles schools are closed after a federal terror threat. Everything that comes up, we have to investigate, and it just takes time and it takes people. Comments? Yes, no?
Yeah, I don't really have any questions.
I'd like to, yeah, pardon, yeah.
I'm trying to look at things objectively, and so, you know, I'd just like to hear what you have to say about the other three positions, and then we'll try to make some decisions on what we do.
Okay. The, regarding the three jailers, and Victor may be able to get here in time, but regarding the three jailers, when the initial study was done, not by us, based on the new facility, the plan was eight more, and that's what they recommended, the people who did the study, and again, not us, recommended that we have eight more people than we've got now. We looked at it, and we've been able to hold it together with minimum staffing, but it's absolute minimum staffing, and it's very tough. We think three more would certainly help that model. And that's general positions. The last time that we had part-time interviews, we had, how many, how many, we had five responses? Five responses. The pool is getting very small. And I will tell you that I thank God for polygraph and voice stress analyzers. You know, when you're, when you're sitting there and they're doing polygraph or voice stress analyzer, and you're sitting, you're getting people that are applying for law enforcement positions, and they go, "Well, okay, yeah, I did do, I did do some drugs." Well, what'd you do? "Well, I haven't done acid in three days." It, you know, the pool's getting smaller and smaller, and it's harder to keep part-time people. And part-time people have primary jobs, and if their primary job calls them, then they call in and go, "I can't make it. My main job is keeping me away from it." So that's why we're also asking for the full-time people, because it helps us, because it's their primary job. Staffing's a pain. And certainly, when people get injured on work, when people take vacation, which they need to take vacation, when people have other leave time, it's just a fact of life, and we've got to be able to cover those shifts. And am I guaranteeing that'll be a great reduction in overtime? Can't guarantee that. We hope that there's a reduction in overtime, but we don't know what each year brings to us. We don't know if we're going to have a major surge in increasing mental commitments. We don't know if we're going to have more people than we have to guard in the hospitals. We do what we can with what we've got. Unfortunately, in our venue, so much is a surprise. I'm sure that Larry out of Public Works would be really happy if he could predict exactly how the snow is going to fall.
So do they work, they work eight hours? Is it just one, one extra jailer per shift? Are they eight-hour shifts or?
How would you?
What are, what's adding three jailers?
The three jailers will be added to the primary shifts overnight, day swings and midnight shift. And then we are hoping that that will free up also a more senior officer that can help conduct criminal investigations in the jail. The jail is like a community within a community, and the same things happen in the jail that happen on the street, and the population actually has a higher propensity to commit crimes, even in jail. So we do have an investigation issue in there. So having those extra people on shift will also help us be able to investigate those issues that go on in the jail as well. I think it's important to note that the additional three people is only going to get us part of the way to where we needed to be in the beginning. The projections that were done prior to open in the new jail indicated that we should have at least about eight more staff. And if we calculate just the minimum staffing levels needed, five men and a supervisor 24 hours a day, and then the transport division, the staffing that we have is, causes us to have overtime automatically, because we have to meet those minimum staffing levels and to cover, if we had a situation where everybody took every bit of vacation and holiday time that they could, that they're granted by the county off, we would not have enough staff. We have to work overtime to be able to even do that. So this is only getting us a portion of the way where we needed to be when the jail first opened. I think that's important to remember, irregardless of increases in inmate population, workload, or anything else.
Well, and remember, when we say transport team, they're also managing the courthouse operation, moving inmates within the courthouse and guarding the inmates in their presence. Court marshals are there to protect the judges. Our staff is there to maintain security. Questions on that?
So when you talk about minimum staffing level, are you talking about the report that was shown when we opened the jail, or, I mean, I'm confused.
There are two reports. There's the one that was shown opening the jail, and there's also that one by Bill Gasnos? Is that it? Out of Kansas City? Who came in independently and did all of it? Both of them reflected the same thing. And our recommendations have always been what they're, what they said, we thought we could do it effectively with it. And we're doing, I think, I think that Victor and his people are doing a really good job with the staffing they've got. It, you know, if things are changing on the street, things are changing in the jail, it's that microfiling that Victor was discussing. You know, we, most we can do is present to you, and you all have to make decisions within that scope, and, well, between you all and the auditor, but ultimately, the decisions in your homes court.
But we have an inmate at the hospital. Is that jailers that are there, or is that?
For the most part, yes.
It's not deputies?
For the most part, it's jail staff.
Okay.
I always check and make sure it's covered. If not, I've gone in before.
And it's not just hospital stays, but 96-hour transports, and it's not just to St. Mary's, it's to MUPC, it could be to Joplin, Neosho, you know, where we have an officer, three or four, sometimes six hours on the transport, riding in an ambulance, basically.
Yeah, we didn't, we weren't, I wasn't even aware of that, until you brought that to our attention.
Well, and realistically on that, sometimes people go, "Well, do you all have to do that?" The order that comes out says to any peace officer state of Missouri, it's to us, "You are commanded to take this person into custody and transport them to..." You know, it doesn't mean we have to do it that instant, not necessarily. And that's where we work out, like we're working out St. Mary's Hospital on our trial now. Between certain hours, we're not doing it. That doesn't mean if it comes in 20 minutes before that, we're not running to Neosho like we did the other day.
So the officer we sent isn't a jailer, or is it one of your deputies?
Usually, it's a jailer or a jail deputy.
You also have to remember that that state statute says, once the hospital releases them, if that person does not have a ride home, they don't even have to ask to arrange for a ride with their family. State statute says that we must go and pick them up and take them back to their home. So a good, a good amount of the time, their family's picking them up, but we do on occasion have to, have to do that, so. So, I mean, we're, we're getting by with what we have. We're not able to cover over, or vacation, and sick leave, and various things, and that's contributing to the overtime in the jail. And so, I mean, I don't think that I'll ever be able to give you eight, I mean, not this year or at any time.
That's why we didn't ask for it. You know, we, we look at the budget too.
Right.
And we try to work within, I mean, when we submitted this, we submitted a budget that was in the black.
Right. So, I mean, I'd, I'd be inclined to do some of this if there was going to be a reduction in part-time and overtime. But I think that was the big question that we had, is that, you know, surely if you're having some issues there, yeah, maybe you need another person to bring up a supervisor, but surely some of this is going to reduce some of that part-time and overtime.
Well, and as I said earlier, we, we, we hope it reduces. Again, I can't guarantee what next year's going to bring to us. The predictive, Larry, I don't mean to pick on you, but I'm sure a snowfall in July would be problematic. We don't, we don't have the ability to totally predict. We look at what's happened, we look at where we're going, we look at, we look at sociological trans, I'm telling you, it's going to be a pickup, not a reduction. It's also the most litigious environment that we have, the jail, and Jill can attest to that, and that's true across the nation. Jails are the most litigious thing that we do within our structure.
Yeah, underwear.
Yeah, underwear. And the other, the other question that came up at some point was with hostage negotiators, why do we have a bunch? We have a bunch because somebody has to be able, it's not just one person that does it, it's a team effort, and you have to be able to pull enough people to do the job when you have to do the job. And hopefully, you rarely ever have to do the job. There's a reason that there's a shotgun and a rifle in each patrol car too, because you don't need it 99% of the time, but when you need it, there's nothing else that takes its place.
Well, I was, the one, this question is five, I thought, boy, that's, we got five.
Yeah, it's a team, it's a team sport. It's an easy way to look at it.
And there's no one's going to be able to show up. We have a situation in Miller County, they're stretching the citizens, or opposite situation, where it takes up, did all call, the team was there, but the only negotiators I could get there on scene were two of them, have a fire.
Now, they've gone through, they go through training and?
Yes, they're certified in what they do.
Correct.
It's just, just like road deputies, we try to have all road deputies. We try it, and it's a constant circle, but we, we keep them trained as death investigators because part of our job is to do death investigations for the coroner's office. So every time there's an unattended death, we got a deputy who's a trained death investigator specific to that doing that. Our training models are huge, and Department of Public Safety just added another 24 hours to the required, every body that carries a commission, training, and it's instead of 48 hours every three years, it's 24 hours a year, period, minimal training. So that's a significant increase. And that's the other issue, keeping people trained, training, and doing in-service training with jail staff. We have a double-up day with patrol division, which means there's a day where you've got two teams on, and we do a lot of training on those days. Jail does not have that luxury, and that's part of the issues as well with overtime.
I'm the bad guy. Bad guy, we opened up the jail with the minimum staff level, I argue. Excuse me. I guess, are we going to reduce part-time and overtime at all then? If we add these positions?
It is our hope that adding these positions will reduce overtime. With the caveat that if long as nothing really bad happens. This last year, we had the potential public disturbance situations, and then the hospital stays have really threw a monkey wrench, especially the hospital stays are what threw a monkey wrench into our overtime this year. We have to hope that last year was a, a peak in that trend compared to years past. If we normalize next year, then this three, these three staff positions should help us reduce overtime. But we just can't predict what's going to happen.
Yeah, I understand that part, but I would think that there's a reason for doing that, that it will reduce our part-timers.
Yeah, Charles, it's part of, it's part of the reason we're not asking for eight people. And you know, there's, the other, the other side of it is medical. We've got a nurse there roughly eight hours a day, and the issue is, is that we're doing, we're covering a lot of things. And for instance, just pharmaceutical costs. This year, we've had a bump in people with HIV. And what is it, the monthly is what, 4,500 on pharmaceuticals?
Forty-five to $6,000 a month.
And it's not an option of whether we provide the medication. State law requires it. Humanity requires it, but state law requires it. And you know, that means people have to be sensitive to what they're doing, they've got to be trained in all of those aspects.
Where's the money going to come from? I know you said you brought a budget that was in the black, and the statement you made about, we'll do what we can with what we got, that's exactly where I'm coming from, is we got your bottom number here with your sales tax, money from general revenue, your revenue from fees and licenses and such, so basically, we got that bottom dollar to work with.
Well, you've got, and it depends, you, you know, you threw an extra $180,000 at us with the 911, and I would contend that some of that is just a general service offered to the citizens of the county, not specific to EMS and law.
And we can look at that, I'll find that. We were actually going to look at the count of how many are called in for the ambulance versus law enforcement and fire.
Work with that and fire.
So that's not a problem, look at that too. We don't have the admin fee in there, we've been working with that, we've been trying to get this all to where it's in the black, and we can look at it 20 years from now and know that you left it in a good position when you left next year.
Well, and, and in reality, the discussion was that that stuff wasn't going to start happening until we were past the 2020, 2022 nexus, and so it started kind of early. And the reason we're in good shape is because we've worked very, very hard on the revenue stream of the jail.
We've made significant increases in the jail's recovery of the money that unfortunately the taxpayers have to spend for a necessary evil.
I agree, it's a necessary evil.
And the, and the mental health contract, the ability to recover over $12,000 last year from medical expenses from inmates, and we're doing everything we can to try and look for more ways that we can recover funds that have to be spent on the jail.
Kind of whirl into itself over there, isn't it?
It is. It's a community within your community.
By far, as I remember right offhand, when we said we were going to start putting these other, the admin fee, I know I've sat and talked with the previous author a couple of times, I have revisited this with Kristen, but we've talked with Jim about it, and we look out over the next 20 years or till 2023. You can change one number by just a minimal number, and it can either make it very red or very black, so we can manipulate the numbers how we want to, but I don't remember saying anything about the admin fee for sure.
I was talking specifically to the 911 fee, and, and as I'm, I'm sure that Kristen and I know that Jim had said that we've done a good job living within the structure, rarely looking at being a contingency. And we have a fairly healthy contingency, and so does general revenue. And if a need arises, I am absolutely not opposed to approaching you all about taking funds from general revenue, because nevertheless, it's a service required by the county, whether or not there's a, there's a sales tax.
Well, I don't disagree that it's a service required, but we have to do it with what we've got. We've got the half-cent sales tax plus the 2.08 million from general revenue already coming in, so I just think we got to live within that means.
Two million forty.
2.04. So, that's the thing, where's the money going to come from too? And I'll do the same thing to our own departments, where I'm just picking on you all. thing to our own departments, where I'm just picking on you all by any means.
And my contention is...
We're called Larry right now, too. Public Works is in the same boat as the SLS and us.
Well, and I would contend the same thing, that the money's available. It just depends on which pocket you're going to pull it from. The other thing that at some point we'll need to discuss with this is countywide, we've got to look at a salary program. And if you do it... You know, last year, Public Works got a bump that none of us got. And I think some... I've heard that another department is getting some this year already, a guarantee report. I don't know if that's true or not, your people. But whether you go with the plan that we presented, or we come up with one for the whole county, I would encourage you to, before we do anything else, that we get going on that early next year and make that happen, make it a happening thing. It's not good enough to do a plan like we did several , well, 11 years ago, 10 years ago, and then implement it only if it's hard. It's not effective.
I voted no for it, Greg, just so you know.
But regardless of whether you voted no for it or not.
I picked on it once again, but I knew that if we started with it there, it was going to balloon into everybody. So, and that's why I think that the merit raises, and you know, I thought the two plus two this year might have been a little more, but it was a way for us to try to make some of these salaries good, make some adjustments. So I'd rather actually do that than be creating positions. I'd rather try to make some of the adjustments to the salaries, you know, making more decisions.
Well, and the sad part of it is we need to do both. That's the hard part of the whole thing. And again, when we submitted our initial, it was all covered.
All right, that's about all I have about it. I understand where you're coming from. Let's use more help.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's go back to our pending contracts. Signing of voting and putting on a purchasing contract.
Without any equipment contract?
Which one is it first, the voting one?
Yeah, voting and putting on a purchasing contract.
This is just the contract. Priority approved and everything else.
Jill, you want to sign this one? So you start here?
You got a chance to let it over, Jim?
I did, thanks.
Do we have another one coming to receive a postage?
Is that what you mean?
Postage, you're right there.
Oh, post, okay.
Signing of postage contract, yeah.
No, we'll do that somewhere.
No, just by me?
We haven't voted that yet. We still got it.
Oh, yeah.
That motion is a sign kicker. Keeping you on track here. I move that we sign the contract with Henry M. Adkins and sign. All voted. All in favor?
Second.
I second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Christmas got you on bluster, doesn't it?
It does. I tell you what, I'm so tired of parties.
Quit telling her you're going to go. Just for the purchase, Steve, on his Pitney Bowes?
Yes, that's the purchase machine. Larry, that's the purchase machine.
Move that we sign the contract with Pitney Bowes for the postage meter equipment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval and signing of copy scanner machine contract.
Oh, Chris may have signed that one.
Yeah.
Our current copy machine upstairs has a duplexing. We've had to have it serviced several times, so we looked at getting a new one. And if we have the money in our budget this year to buy a new one, and I want to go ahead and get one of those scans, because there's several of us that don't have scanners on our desk. When I checked in with Dale on how much those individual desktop scanners are, like we got from basement, they're like $900. So we'd like to buy a copier that can scan also, and that would be, you know, better for bigger documents. The price of the copier is $2,600, and then the annual maintenance is $80 a year. And the copier that we're replacing, we currently pay $957 a year maintenance for it. So past the initial price of the copier, our maintenance fee will go down considerably on a annual basis.
So will the maintenance fee go away when we buy this one, or?
No, it will be $80 a year versus $957.
Right, but will the other maintenance fee go away?
Yes, yes. We will. I think that we actually own that machine, but we'll probably sell it or surplus it or something if it's not functioning properly.
So this is just an agreement for the maintenance?
I have the agreement to buy the copier, and then I have agreement for the maintenance also. I have to... And Jill has lots of that to go.
I move that we approve and sign the contract with DataCom, is that correct, for the copy machine?
I'll second it. Where's that coming from? You got it in the budget?
She got it in her budget.
I have about $4,200.
That's the cheapest yearly contract I took after $80.
And that includes 20,000 copies and all the toner and everything.
That's... Barrett Rees.
Yeah, Barrett.
I guess we've gotten that real. I'm talking my way up here.
I wouldn't need my scanner, but I would want this kind of... Also, everybody...
You'd be bringing us back in a maintenance degree contract?
No, I got both of them right here.
It's all one.
Yeah, well, it's two. I have two. One is just the first of the copier, and this is the maintenance.
We've already had a motion that's...
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm signing another step, man.
Trying to move it along.
Yeah, well, there's...
Think you loosen your tie a little bit.
Projection of all bids for the 2015 49 concrete foundation work, salt building.
The quick and dirty of this is basically we put this out for bid. We received responses. The plans reflected four bays or whatever, and they only intended for it to be two. For whatever reason, that wasn't communicated to all bidders. And so some came in with bids for two, some came in with bids for four. So we'd like to put that out for bid again. So they're all bidding for two.
We open them all?
That's all we're seeing, is the disparity between bids.
Now everybody knows what everybody bid, for the ones that bid two bids.
Yep. We've already talked to the bidders. They're very able to rebid it. They understand.
They're nicer than me, then.
Not a whole lot they can do. They'll just reject the bids and start over. I don't think there's much they can do anyway. It could be a bad...
We talked to the firm lawyer, explain the situation. He understands. Didn't like it, he understands. It wasn't a unit price or anything. It wasn't per unit or... It was just a long time. It was just set to one... Everything. It was just set. We don't have enough to build more than that much. I move that we reject all bids for the concrete foundation work.
All in favor?
Aye.
Signing of the agreement for Horizon UC GMS. This is UC's agreement to start service for the Cradle Point that we discussed last week.
I move that we sign the agreement with Horizon.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Cool it down.
Counts payable if we have it on.
Calm down.
Okay, no counts payable, move on.
One last one to go, buddy. Put that up.
Access control change order.
We have a change order for this. Whenever they admit it, we did 500 cards. Basically, the card format's proprietary, so everyone would have to get new cards when our current ones are compatible. So this is a change order for negative $2,230.
Change order number on that, sure.
Number one.
I move that we approve change order number one with all systems.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Renewal of property equipment liability coverage for 2016 year.
Hey, I'm not sure if this spreadsheet is attached. Do you have this spreadsheet attached? I'd argue this is pretty... Basically, we do work through not-nod insurance on this. They gave us a quote from MoCrim for our liability and property coverage. On the blue side is our liability coverage, and you can see down there compared to 2015 to 16, the overall cost is going to go up 2.42. See the different areas? Some went up, mostly all of them went up. Keep in mind that our vehicles are in that total automobile coverage. And of course, if we get newer ones and older ones drop off, that could be part of the increase, the 2.4. Then on the blue side is the property coverage. You can see 2015 versus 16, and normally, MoCrim comes in and marks up our property. Because the cost to replace that property does grow every year with construction cost. So our property value is actually went up 6%. Keeping that in mind, our rate only went up 2%. So I think this is a very good renewal with MoCrim. I'd ask you guys to approve this. I know I sent you all the spreadsheet details of all of the equipment, all of our buildings, and all of the heavy equipment that we have covered. So I ask for approval to stay with MoCrim for 2016.
I move that we approve the renewal with MoCrim.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the 2017, 2021 one-half cent capital improvement sales tax recommendations.
Can I actually put that on the agenda? Actually put that on the agenda. So they really need to get this approved to start doing the committee does.
Do you have that?
I'm sorry.
You gave it to us last week.
Yes. And it's very one-liner, you know. We can get into the details of the project later, you know, but as for now, I just want direction to go ahead and start the process.
We didn't change this from last week, did we?
No, I did add the bottom part, which is the 15%.
Oh, capital improvement.
Yes.
You're okay with everything off your list?
Yeah, that's the breakout that we showed you earlier.
Is that the same? Larry, is that the same thing you passed out earlier? Okay, okay. Just to be safe.
We just didn't have the 15% breakout on top of that.
Okay, yeah, I'm kind of like that.
Good with that, or...
No, we talked about it last week.
You agree with that cooperative stuff, the ability to do stuff, too?
Yeah, we just raised it 40,000 on it, and we're going to split that up, kind of, when we can figure out how we're going to do that different. But we wanted to add a little bit to that right now. It wasn't a substantial amount.
Good with it.
I don't know if to take the motion to approve, or... We'd like some kind of on-record statement that you're getting one, too.
I'll make the... They're all approved, the recommended half-cent capital improvement sales tax breakdown recommendation.
That's the motion.
Yeah.
Good.
And考虑到worded, we're not really doing it there.
No, we're not really, no. All in favor?
Aye.
Just rubber stamping it, I guess.
Thank you.
Final closeout, change order, Pioneer Trail Safe Routes to the school project.
Make sure they have the front of you, Melody, put on, send in your packet, the actual text of the change order. This is the final closeout. We had a change order one. Change order number one included that shot rocks, stable evasions, upgrade stable evasions that were approved prior. This is change order two, this is the final closeout amount. It's $21,663 in one cent. And basically, it's just the miscellaneous things that we encounter typically every project. In this case, we had a few things that went a little more over than expected, mostly due to concrete driveway, the driveway approaches, and then we had a little additional asphalt work at the western project where we had time, that we had to do that. So this will be the final closeout. Like I said, the amount is 22... I'm sorry, $21,663 in one cent, and I'd recommend approval. Is there any questions?
So this is above change order number one, correct? Was the total project still under estimate?
Not really. I had to go back and try to think what my original estimate was. I know the bid came in about $100,000 under our estimate, so the total, the total of the whole project is 81. And so based on that, I would say it's kind of under budgeted amount that we had originally. But I don't have that information, but I mean, it's a service center. Oh, I just found it. I couldn't find it on there. I had opened up the agenda. This one on here, she works and stuff around. I know a lot of work, too, but I was kind of curious to see if it was under the original budgeted amount.
I will break it out, but something that we'll have to talk about sidewalks out there, how those we maintain this winter.
Sure, one, yeah.
There's... That's something we definitely need to be talking about, not only their down-on-business lieutenant. So you're just looking for approval for the final contract amount or change order number?
Change order number two, which is the final, as in the final contract amount, which allows us to make the final payment for that project.
I move that we approve change order number two and closeout Pioneer Trail sidewalk project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We talked about sidewalks at one point, but it's no removal. We talked about sidewalks at one point, but it's an old removal.
We did, in email, I think.
We never did. Had any policy or anything, or anything like that.
What we're like.
Yep, final closeout, change order, what we're saying subdivision storm water.
Okay, this is the same situation as Pioneer Trail, it's closed out as a project. Approval of the change order allows us to close out the project and make money payment. The amount of this change order is sixty-four thousand one hundred sixty-six dollars and six cents. Details are shown on the spreadsheet, the over and under. And in talking with Chris, we talked to maybe all three of you previously, we had a situation on one of the roads in subdivision in which when they were doing excavating and direct repair and subgrade for the new pavement, they ran into a lot of poor subgrading, poor soils, digging into it further, they found a bunch of tree stones, trees, basically junk, very dirty road, which is not uncommon on some of the older ones, but typically not this bad. In some cases, we had to go three feet deep for stabilization. And that really, that really blew our, but we did have some quantity estimated in there for this because we knew we'd get some, but we weren't expecting over the whole road to be that way. So that's, that's the big item, that item was sixty-nine thousand plus. Plus three thousand, so we're talking over seventy thousand just in that alone. Knowing this, we were able to utilize some savings on the project to kind of counter some of that. But not enough to compensate at all or to make up for it. So the net overrun on the project is sixty-four thousand one hundred sixty-six dollars and six cents. That would be the amount of change order we recommend approval.
You're gonna close this out too or?
Correct.
It's complete. Except for the one-year warranty.
Yeah.
I move that we approve change order number one and close out what we're like. Water project.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
What's the close session?
I think it's taken off.
Well, this one says real estate, we had the one that was on the EMF.
Okay, it's real estate, yeah.
All right. Frank Mr.
Sleazy developer.
He had to go down and talk to the mayor. I can give him your number if you want to talk to him. I recommended that we have a city-county joint meeting and venue address if we want to. Talk to him enough times, knock up on the table to.
I don't know if he really qualifies.
I ran him through CaseNet and he's had fifty lawsuits since eighty-nine.
Is he coming back?
No, no, he just had his license, he's supposed to meet with the mayor, so I should.
He had a close session.
See, it put that on there.
Real estate.
Larry wants to talk to you.
Oh, you got something on real estate, okay.
I was like him, obviously.
What Eric and I were talking about it there.
Yeah. I wasn't sure what yours was.
Oh, okay.
No, it's not the sleazy.
So we're gonna do close session and then we'll come back and do budget discussion, okay? I move that we go into close session, present to section six, ten point oh two one, to discuss real estate.
Second. Roll call.
Sam?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.